We will open the six, uh, open the open session of the Wem select board on August nineteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty four. PM, um, if we could just take a roll call vote of, um, select board members, please.
Gary present.
Peter Clay present.
Deirdre present.
Karen present.
And Ben present. Thank you. All right, the first agenda item, um, as it is every week for open session is public input. Uh, this is where members of the public, um, in this all virtual, uh, meeting this evening can raise their hand on the zoom. And ask to be recognized to speak for up to two minutes on a subject that isn't already listed as a specific. Item on the agenda, uh, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in the? Uh, open session, public comment portion. I don't see any.
I don't see anybody.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to, um, reports and announcements, starting with the town administrators update.
Hey, Mr. Chair, um, couple of, couple of updates, one update, uh. Of probably pretty big interest, although this was kind of like a, a small update with a larger update to follow is that. The one A traffic light, uh, out in front of town hall is beginning to get, uh, significant amount of traction at the state. Uh, they came out kind of in full force just in the last week or so. Uh, so we're working with them, uh, and our council and their council and their. Uh, the various teams that are involved in these types of project, uh, from DOT. To identify, well, they've been identified, but working through the process of, uh. The, there is, I believe, one or two takings that may have to take place, land takings, small. That are on town of Wenham property and a half a dozen, maybe five. Uh, again, some of these details would be ironed out, but, um, temporary easements that will have to be placed on private landowners. To, uh, complete the project. So, you know, in a nutshell, uh, appraisals have to be done. Um, individuals have, you know, an offer to compensate has to be extended. Uh, and you know, ultimately town meeting vote will have to take place, uh, whether that these, uh, easements can, can be put in place. But just, you know, according, you know, high level is that it's gotten traction again and seems to be moving. Uh, relatively quickly and we're targeting any town meeting approvals that need to take place, uh. Are being targeted, the eight, this upcoming April town meeting is the target date. So that, uh, more, more updates to come, more comprehensive timelines and checklists and all that stuff. Will be presented at a later date once we have them, but I just wanted to let folks know because we do get a lot of inquiries on. One, that one A project and what's going on there. Uh, the other note is, uh, Arbor Day is, uh, going to be re, uh, yeah, Arbor Day. Arbor Street is going to be repaved, uh, the plan is to do the millings on Thursday, uh, excuse me, on Tuesday of eight twenty six. And the paving on eight twenty seven, uh, and then roughly two weeks later. They will do the fog lines, uh, center line along with the couple of crosswalks that will have to be repainted. Uh, just a note to residents that, uh, all, all direct abutters to Arbor Street were sent a letter notifying them of. Of this, uh, of this project and, uh, also anybody, uh, one house down on any connecting street. Uh, so if anybody would like to receive a copy of that notice, I can send it out, or if any residents, uh, along that they're listening in tonight. Uh, have lost their copy or did not get it, let me know and we're happy to reforward it to you. The HVAC is still going well, uh, you know, full guns ablaze and they're really. Doing to what, you know, from what I can tell, a good job and, um. You know, appear to almost be ahead of schedule, knock on wood, I don't want to jinx us there, but we've already expended all the ARPER funds. Uh, and, um, and the CPC funds have been expended, expended. We're now moving into the state grant and then ultimately we'll be accessing. The tax exempt lease purchase agreement that was authorized at town meeting, so we're about fifty percent expended. And the project is going well. Uh, we have, uh, the, just a note, the select board group email has been activated and added to the website. So that will go, when anybody emails that email address, it will go to each select board member. Myself, Joe and Michelle, kind of just as a catch to make sure that, uh, the emails are received and, and responded to. And this also marks the, our last meeting as a, the select board's last meeting of the summer, well, of the summer months. The next meeting will be in September and, uh. We discussed, I believe, back in May or June that the select board. Uh, would only like to continue its remote meetings through the summertime, uh, with the plan to return in person. At an alternate location, starting in September, so we have basically two options. It is either the library meeting room or the COA. The library meeting room is probably, uh, the best equipped as far as, uh, audio visual, um. Services for HW Cam, uh, we would have to use the owl and HW Cam would stream, uh. Through a, uh, through the, um, as a participant in the zoom, they would stream it. Through that, so they, you know, it wouldn't be like a camera in the, uh, the meeting room, so to speak. But the, the only caveat to that is the library is not located in Wenham, however, you know, we were able to, um, uh. Real, we were able to, to, um, to figure out that the, that. A public meeting doesn't have to be held, it's kind of been like a wives tale that's been, you know, passed around that a public meeting has to be held. In the, in the municipality, that is not the case with a open meeting, that is the case with town meeting. And, but the, you know, the word of caution is that. You know, it's certainly a political decision that the select board would have to make whether they felt. Comfortable having it in another community, uh, and whether it created any sort of access issues. For its residents, uh, given the location. So, I mean, I think the, the library is right on the line, but you know, I defer to the select board and we can. I can gather feedback and have some conversations in the coming weeks and then work with the, through the chair. To determine the location for, uh, our next meeting. And those are all the updates that I have tonight.
Thank you, um. I have no comments this evening other than to, um. Pick up on what you just raised Steve about the alternative location. For what would be potentially our next meeting on September ninth and, um. I, I have no, I think it's fine to. Get some feedback in this, in this setting, um, I can say it's, you know, unanticipated. Uh, issue of discussion, um, that I think it's fine to just weigh in on this logistical question, um. Tonight during select board comments, so my comment would be that I have, I have absolutely no issues or problems with. Having our meeting at the, at the library, um, and if other members wish to, um, weigh in on that. Point, uh, they could do so during the, uh, during the section of the agenda, select board members. Uh, comments, so we'll pass it on to the vice chair, Gary Cheeseman, if you have any comments, uh, Gary, um, on this or other, other things.
So on this, I think, uh, given our past history, I'd weigh mostly on what is the audio visual. Best way forward, you know, I think people are not going to have problems with us stepping a few feet across the boundary line, so. I think the critical issue here is where can we get the best AV, uh, connectivity?
Great, thank you, um. Uh, Peter?
Probably agree with Gary.
Okay.
I, I mean, the COA, I mean, the library is open till nine. Generally speaking.
Right.
Whereas we would have to close down the COA when we left. I mean, it's not a big deal, but.
Right. Yeah, since it sounds like the, the AV issues would be much easier to deal with in the library than the COA. Okay, um. Karen, um, any comments on this or, or anything else under select board member reports?
No, I, I agree with Gary and Peter, the only thing is, is I want to bring to your attention, we decided this. Months ago before all the, um. Before all the digging happened in front of town hall, so I'm also not opposed to, to continuing, you know, another. Few months of zoom if necessary. I know that's not an option that no one's really talking about, but. We decided a lot of these things before we had, you know, no option at town hall, so.
Uh, I also agree with Karen on that one, you know, what the heck?
We started construction where we made a deal without the construction stuff, so perfectly fine between this and I. Kind of think that, you know, the first couple of months, September, October, November, it's super busy for everybody. And I think Zoom is, is preferable, um, but at the same time, if the rest of the board wants to go in person, I'm not impartial to the library. Although that being said. There's been multiple occasions where we've been denied access to the library because they have shortage of staff, so we need to ensure that that is the case.
Okay, um, thank you, Deirdre.
Yeah, I don't know anything about being denied by the library, I would prefer the library, I think Zoom is. Fine over the summer, but I think it's important for us to be in person. In general, so I would prefer the library and HW Cam streams the Hamilton meetings just fine, so, um. You know, I think that's the best option.
Okay, before we move on to the consent agenda, I just want to make sure that no select board member had any other. Uh, community updates or, or otherwise that they wanted to share. Sounds like no, okay.
Wait a sec, community updates?
Well, just the, the normal, um, select board comments, Peter, if you had any. Attaboys or otherwise.
Well, actually, Steve, I have a question for probably you and Joe. And I, and I don't know why you would know this, Steve, but if you look at the, um, the big planters. Like at the corner of Cherry and Cedar and Cedar and Topfield Road. Those, those have been removed. And I think it's because. The flowers are actually way, I mean, the garden club's done a ridiculously good job in terms of growing really big plants there. And so at the corner of, um. Cherry and Main Street, I mean, you kind of have to sneak out a little bit, poke your nose out to be able to see people coming, um. From, uh, Hamilton. The Hamilton direction.
So you're saying they have been, I'm not aware of, of the movie, they have been removed or you would like to have them moved?
No, one on, um, Cedar Street and Cherry and the one on Cedar and Topfield Road have been removed.
Okay.
Uh, the one on the corner of Cedar and Topfield Road, who's actually just been picked up and moved over. Whereas the one at Cedar and Cherry is gone.
Right.
So, um.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know any, anything about that, I, I know that the DPW. They're made of wood, unpressured treated wood for, you know, environmental, uh, concerns and, um, they do rot. With some frequency and the, the DPW rebuilds them, but I don't, I haven't heard of anything, I will, I'll find that out and get back to you.
Well, you may want to ask Kevin.
Yeah, I'll ask Kevin and Rich and maybe Marty Lawrie, uh, from the garden club, well, I'll send an email out and see if anybody knows. Or I'm sure somebody knows, but they'll, they can fill me in and I can fill the board in.
Karen or Deirdre, I'm sorry, you've always mentioned, um, that you have a real. You think the, uh, intersection of Cherry and Maine is, is kind of a, a dangerous place. That, I mean, do you know what I'm talking about with these big flower boxes?
Is it, is it? These are too big, sorry, sorry.
That's why I would ask Kevin. I mean, are, are they creating a safety issue because? I mean, the flowers are like five feet high off the top of the box.
Yeah, Peter, the, the, the girl, the elementary school girls call them the Jurassic Park flowers because they're just absolutely huge. Um, but yeah, as much as Marty has done an amazing job with this, there is a, a traffic, uh, traffic issue. I mean, I go to take a left off of Cherry Street and I can't see one A. Although they're gorgeous, so a little bit trade off.
Okay, I think, um, that moves us on to the consent agenda. Um, there are four items on the consent agenda. Um, I'll read them and if any member of the board would like to have. Any of these items set aside for individual discussion. Please, um, either raise your virtual hand or just, um, s- speak up. So, uh, the FY twenty six ADA ramps and sidewalks agreement through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. The FY twenty six roadway milling services agreement through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. The FY twenty six roadway paving services agreement through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Think the board has had an opportunity, um, and the pack had to, um, review each of those agreements. And then item E, um, is a one day liquor license for First Church in Wenham. For Saturday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty five, from two to four PM. Um, seeing that no one has indicated that they wish to. Have any of these items held for individual discussion, I would entertain a, some motion, um. To approve all items on the consent agenda.
Peter Clay is so moved.
Gary seconds.
Thanks, we'll take a roll call vote, uh, Karen.
Karen Nanger says yes.
Deirdre?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. All right, thanks very much, that moves us to new business. Um, on new business items, the select board allows for public comment. Uh, of up to two minutes per person, a total of ten minutes. Um, typically we will, um, entertain select board and staff. Comments and questions, if any, first on the new business agenda item. Um, before I'll, uh, open it up to, to, uh, broader public commenter questions. Um, the first item is F discussion and potential vote to sign the order of taking. Which establishes a permanent public way easement for Spring Hill Farm Road and Angus Circle as public ways. Um, Steve, is there anyone to, um, give a recap on that issue, uh, this evening?
Yeah, I can, I can recap it, um, so. So basically, Spring Hill Farm is a subdeveloped, developed subdivision here in Wenham, I know it has, uh. Been drawn out over the last couple of years, but, uh, ultimately the road was designed, uh, and the subdivision was built as. To have both, uh, Spring Hill Farm Road and Angus Circle, both contained in the Spring Hill Farm subdivision. Uh, to become public ways once the subdivision was completed, uh, there was some. Uh, hang up on the order of conditions. For the storm water management, uh, storm water drainage management. Program, uh, issued by the DEP. And I can say that, you know, the board, both the planning board and the select board have worked through those issues with the residents. Of Spring Hill Farm, uh, the, the town has come to. You know, an agreement with the residents, uh, as far as who is responsible for. The, uh, product, the manager, the operation management plan for the storm water. And also there is, uh, some restrictions to the easements as originally outlined in the, the plan. To gain access to the retention pond and also a drainage pipe that, uh, drains. The storm water from the street down into the retention pond. Uh, and obstruction has been placed by a homeowner, uh, up at Spring Hill Farm, a stone wall. And, um, they have, uh. Essentially, you know, put a deed restriction on the property that allows the town to access. You know, essentially through any means necessary, uh, can remove the wall, uh, access the pipe. Uh, access it through their driveway down across their backyard, there was the, an additional easement has been placed and up the plan. Updated and the town, uh, you know, has no obligation to, you know, to replace the landscaping. And, uh, you know, ornate stone wall with the lighting and things like that, which were concerned. Due to the, uh, the expense that that would incur. And that will be transferred through, you know, it's, it's currently on the property now and will be transferred to any subsequent owners. And the, uh, again, additionally, the owners have agreed. To continue to maintain the order of conditions from the DEP for the storm water. And if the town has to step in for any reason, the town has the ability to lean. Uh, the properties up there, uh, so that it can recoup any costs that it incurred. Uh, doing so, so this is. Essentially, it is, is the town adopting the, those two streets that I mentioned before as a public way. Where the town will maintain the streets themselves, you know, both in paving and patch ceiling and. Butthole filling and, uh, snow and ice removal. Um, you know, spring cleanup with the, uh, the back trucks that go around and then, uh, street sweep. And things like that, any other town, any other town owned street and, and the town of Wenham, uh. Except for the storm water system that exists up there.
Okay, thank you, there any questions from members of the board for Steve or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, um.
Hope this, we got a public just raised.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, yeah, I see, uh, Angel Goodman, um, with her hand up amongst attendees, so if we could bring her over to the. Speaking side of the wall. Please.
Hi, everyone, um, can you hear me? This is, uh, Andrew Goodman. I had to, um, I couldn't get back into the zoom after I was kicked off for the, uh, the executive session, so. I'm using my wife's iPad, um, so just, I don't want to go through the whole well worn story, but just to. I think it's important to remind everybody that. The acceptance of the street here was approved at the town meeting, the special town meeting in June. And so my understanding is that tonight is just really just a ministerial act that the. Uh, chair of the select board just needs to sign a, a paper that gets recorded. And that there's really no discretion here in that. You know, we've been through this long process with the planning board and select board over the last six months, so I'm not, I don't want to belabor any of that, but. I just want to make sure everyone has that context and then. I, I will also say if, if it's not, if something's not going to get approved tonight, um, I'd like another opportunity to speak, but I'm assuming it's going to be, so. I'll just get out on this, I'd like to say thank you very much to the select board and the planning board. For working with the HOA for the last, you know, what is it, nine months now, so we, we appreciate it and hopefully this will be the last. Um, item to close out the street acceptance, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Just me, Mr. Goodman's, uh, street address.
Oh, sorry, to Angus Circle, Wenham, Massachusetts.
Great, thank you. All right, I don't see any other virtual hands raised in the zoom, um, and then switching back to panelists, I see. No hands raised, so I think we're ready to entertain a, a motion on this. And, um.
I can move it?
Yes, if you do.
Move to sign the order of taking which establishes a permanent public way easement for Spring Hill Farm Road and Angus Circle as public ways.
Second.
Karen has seconded, thank you, we'll take a roll call vote, Gary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Karen?
Karen angry, yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
And Ben is yes, that's unanimous, thank you very much. We'll move to item G, um, our town clerk Diane Buco. Um, providing an overview of the board of registrars and. Uh, to request appropriate appointments to the board of registrars, specifically Roseanne Brzezinski. And Christine Burns, uh, Diane, are you, um, available to?
Yeah, but I'm Joe. Can you see me?
It's a switch.
Yes, it's a little bit of a, yeah, a little bit of a problem, um, good evening, everybody, thanks for having me, I hope everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, the board of registrars is a mandated four member board that includes myself, the town clerk. The four members should be split as equally as possible between the leading political parties. So here in Wenham, we have one Republican, one Democrat and two unenrolled, unenrolled being what we used to think as independent. The registrars have three year terms, but don't follow our regular committee appointment schedule. By state law, so rather than being appointed for July first through June thirtieth, they're appointed for April first through March thirty first. So that makes it super easy for all the towns to remember that. But so that's what brings me here today, what we did in twenty twenty four is appoint Roseanne Brzezinski. Uh, we reappointed her through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, when it really should be just through March thirty first, twenty twenty seven. In an attempt to try to get everybody back on the right schedule and also we, uh, missed. Reappointing Christine Burns, um, in March, so she actually needs to be appointed through March thirty first. Twenty twenty eight, so I'm hoping that we can make those appointments. Um, but before you do those motions or appointments or discuss, I wanted, I was asked to explain what exactly the board of registrars does. Um, and it's all, it's all in law, it's Mass General Law fifty one. But to be honest, due to the way things are in the world today, much of the work that the board of registrars would do is done by the town clerk and her staff. My staff of me and Linda. It used to be that the, um, board of registrars would do the census and the street list, they would go door to door. I don't know if you remember that, or they would make calls and then they would type up the list. Um, for example, that was just one of their duties, but now that's all basically electronic, we use the mail, it's all in a central voter registry system. Which has security access, it's difficult to get everybody on the system, so it's become just the town clerk's position, job to do. Well, with that said, uh, the board of registrars are essential to the democratic election process because they're the key personnel in any election recount. Which you remember, we've had a few of recently. And they're also the ones in charge of any type of residency hearing, which also occurs every now and then, we had one here in Wenham a few years ago and in. Communities that are. Big summer communities that, um, it, it's a larger issue. But anyway, they're very important, they're a great group that we have right now, so my request tonight is just that we could reappoint them, um, properly.
Great, thank you very much, Diane, um, does anybody have any, uh? Questions or comments relating to? The board of registrars? I don't see any. All right, and so we would want to take these motions, uh, one at a time for each. Um, nominee. Um, could I ask someone to make the motion for Roseanne Brzezinski?
Can you just repeat, repeat the date there, Diane?
Yes, so I was going to give you that, unless Ben has it.
I ha- I have it in front of me, um. Sure.
Want me to read it then?
Sure, Deirdre, thank you.
Move to amend Roseanne Brzezinski's term on the board of registrars for to a term ending March thirty one, twenty twenty seven.
Gary seconds.
Great, thank you, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Karen?
Karen angry, yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
And Ben is yes, Deirdre, would you mind making the motion for Christine Burns?
Sure, move to appoint Christine M. Burns to the board of registrars effective August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, through a term ending March thirty one, twenty twenty eight.
Gary seconds.
Thank you, roll. Thank you. Roll call, Peter?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. Thank you very much. Uh, the next agenda item also Diane is, is uh, yours to take the floor, if you would.
All right. Thank you again. So we have an election coming. Um, but it's not a regular election. It's not a local election and it's not a state election. It's a school district election. Which means it's called by the school committee. Which also means that the school committee is responsible for the warrant to call the meet, to call the election, the ballots. Deciding where and when the voting is going to happen, among other things. My part, meaning the town clerk, myself and Corinne Cale from Hamilton, is solely there to run the voting. Process and to tabulate the results. However, both Corinne and I have been in contact with the school committee and the administration over there to ensure that everything is running smoothly, fairly, and efficiently. So the details that everyone should be aware of is um. Well, first of all, the warrant has not yet been signed. So assuming that the warrant to call this election is signed on Thursday, August twenty-first, the election will be on Monday. September fifteenth. With polling hours from twelve to eight. Wenham voters will vote at the Wenham Museum. Hamilton voters are voting at the Rec Center. The important dates are the last date to register to vote for this election in Wenham is Thursday, September fifth. And the only option to vote. In person, the only option to voting in person on election day is to absentee vote. Which is similar, but not exactly the same as voting by mail. In other words, there is no vote by mail for this type of election. Absentee voting requires that the voter sign under penalty of perjuries. That they are voting absentee because they will be out of town during the polling hours. Or they have a religious belief or a disability that will keep them from voting at the polls. To vote absentee, they have to complete an application with a wet signature. And you can find those applications on the clerk's page of the website, the secretary of the Commonwealth's website, or just in Town Hall. I have them here. Um. I have to receive any application for a mailed ballot no later than Monday, September eighth. And that's just so that we have enough time to make sure we can mail it out and get it back in time. There is also absentee voting in person at Town Hall. Which will be available by appointment, if possible, starting Monday, August twenty-fifth. Through Thursday, no, um, September eleventh. So that's assuming that the warrant does get signed on this Thursday. We can start absentee voting in person on Monday, August twenty-fifth. Ballots that have already been requested by applications, I have some already, will start to be mailed out on Monday, assuming the warrant is signed. And can be returned by mail, the big drop box in front of Town Hall, or in person by eight o'clock on that election day. I think those are all the details. All that information is also on the website. Um, on the town clerk's page of the website, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Peter?
Uh, Diane? If I'm already registered to vote in Wenham, do I have to? Am I registered to vote for this election?
Yes, good question. Every election has a last day to register to vote, but if you are in the same house, in the same location, you don't need to register for every election. So yes, you are registered to vote.
All right.
Great. Any? Other questions or comments? I don't see any amongst panelists or attendees?
Sorry, I was muted. If I could just add one thing, um, I know we've just some concerns about parking. We are working with the contractors to find suitable offsite parking for. Uh, the um, the contractor's employees. And uh, the disruption to the small part of the parking lot directly adjacent to the Town Hall where the wells are being drilled. Will be patched uh, and fully uh, operational as far as parking. So. You know, with the two containers and, and the, the um. The trash bin were, you know, the uh, the two trash bins were only down about probably four or five spots, but we gained those spots um. By the removal of all the. Public safety trailers. There was about six or seven. So actually, if you compare it to the presidential election last time, we probably have a couple additional spots that are going to be made available. And staff will be encouraged to park offsite as well. So we're doing what we can with parking. We believe. You know, the turnout will probably be consistent with the presidential election and, you know, we've handled it um, before.
Great. Diane?
Um, thank you. I didn't know that, Steve. I really appreciate that. The other thing that will be different, the turnout. Maybe as high as the presidential election. We'll soon see, but it's different in that it's a one-question ballot. So it is a, there's not a lot of time once people get checked in and. You know, vote their ballot and leave. So there won't be a lot of lag time. So it'll be a quick-moving election.
All right, thank you. And of course, you know, regardless of which side you are on in the question, we encourage everybody within earshot of this meeting to please. Exercise your right to vote. Um, it's an important, important issue, and hopefully we will have a, a turnout that rivals the presidential election.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate it. All right, that moves us on to um, agenda item I. Town administrator provide the board. Uh, with an update on twenty-four Cherry Street. Steve? You muted, Steve. I don't know if you're speaking or not, but.
But I was, thank you. So yeah, ju- just a, a quick update. So at the last meeting, the select board uh, voted to authorize, well, to give the feedback to D C A M. That uh, the, the Wenham Select Board would be supportive of the. The state moving forward with their R F P process for the disposal and redevelopment of twenty-four Cherry Street in Wenham. And so what you see before you and is in the public packet for anybody interested is a rough timeline of what that process looks like. So we've, you know, we've already met with the state a couple times. You know, they've expressed their, you know, continued interest and they asked if they could take the first stab at drafting an R F P. R F P that would both encourage um. The uh. And the preservation of, you know, the historic architecture of the structure and also the encouragement of affordable housing. Units to be built there uh, in, in place. So this is uh, the kind of the checklist of things that need, that the state will be doing uh, there. Again, this is using this process. It is all. Uh, on the state to manage and ensure all these pieces are done and checked off. But you know, right now, I think from. A town's perspective is we're waiting on a draft of the R F P where the select board will get an opportunity to review it and uh, weigh in with comments. Before it becomes final and is posted for any bidding. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, but just a, just a quick update.
All right, thank you, Steve. It's great that that seems to be. You know, on track and, and uh, hopefully we'll get some good movement from the state. Uh, any questions or comments from anybody? I don't see any. All right, um, that. Moves us to item J, discussion and potential vote to sign the town administrator's employment contract. Uh, retroactive to an effective July first, twenty twenty-five. Um, I'd like to publicly um. Recognize and, and extend the board's appreciation to Gary Cheeseman for being our representative in uh, what was a. A comprehensive and, and also very professional and cordial negotiation. With um, town administrator Pulis. Um, that uh, has allowed us to arrive at a, at a, at a good resolution. Um, Gary, if you could please um, just give a recap of. The proposed contract that we'll be voting on tonight.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, so last few months, we have been in negotiations with Steve. Uh, gotta real- recognize that town administrators are fairly limited career field and much in demand. Uh, we have done extensive studies on comparable salary ranges in the area. And uh, have come to the conclusion as a board that we needed to make a market adjustment in the salary range for uh, the town administrator. Uh, as I said, uh, we did extensive surveys and studied the numbers. And our final uh, agreement on a very cordial basis, as Ben said, was a salary beginning one July twenty-five. Of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars with three percent pay raises per year thereafter. I think very important in the contract is the fact that uh, after quite a bit of instability prior to Steve's arrival in town. We now have a uh, excellent uh, town administrator and we're going forward with a five-year contract. Which I think is very beneficial to uh, both parties. So that uh, we'll have great stability and a good leadership over the next five years. A couple other minor adjustments were made in the terms of the contract as far as uh, how to uh, adjust for um. Issues that might arise, just cause versus cause and any potential disciplinary uh, voting. But I think we uh, came to a very cordial agreement. I think it's a very fair agreement for both parties. And uh, recommend it to the board here for our vote.
Great, thank you, Gary. Uh, any comments or questions um, from other board members? Don't see any, and I don't see any questions from the public. So I would entertain a, a motion to um. Adopt. Um, and move forward with executing this. Contract with the town administrator Pulis.
Move to sign the town administrator's employment contract effective July one, twenty twenty-five.
Peter seconds.
Great, thank you. We'll go to a roll call vote. Gary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. That's unanimous. Um. Again, Steve, thank you for uh, your efforts in, in reaching this resolution. And as Gary said, I think it's a. A really positive step for the town to, to have cemented a five-year contract with you and to maintain your, your leadership. Um, for the town. Um, so appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I just want to just quickly thank uh. You have to thank the board again, you know, as Gary said, a very cordial negotiation. I thought it was the board, um, you know, was very efficient and took it very seriously, uh, which is not the case in some other communities. So, you know, I just want to say that I appreciate that, uh, and I'm very thankful for the agreement that, that we made, uh, the five years is, you know, like I said, and, you know. I, I enjoy working here every day. So I mean, I'm, I'm thrilled, you know, five years offers some stability, both for myself, my family, and the community. So I think it's, it's uh, good all the way around and, you know. Happy to be here and excited for the next five years. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Steve, I think we're gonna pass over K for now because um, we'll need Sharon for that, right?
Yeah, Joe, it's seven thirty, right? Just a.
That's correct, yes.
All right, yep, yep.
Okay. So we'll move on to item L. We'll come back to K. Item L is discussion and potential vote to approve town of Wenham building projects policy. Steve, do you want to take that?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, this is something. And, you know, we've been talking, it's actually ultimately, Jeff, Jeff's kind of plant, Jeff Sular planted the, the bug in my ear on this and, and it's a good one. And. And honestly, I've been thinking for a while, the way Wenham handles its building. Projects and, you know, has been. It, it's kind of, you know, it been to its detriment. In, you know, a couple of, of, of the projects over the last few years where we. Tend to try to, you know, in, in a sense, we're, you know, we're just, we're getting things done. We're doing it, you know, trying to do it the most. Financially or the cheapest way possible for our taxpayers. But sometimes, um, you know, things go awry and, you know, we're a small community. We have limited resources. Uh, small staff, you know, billion offices of one or one and a half people. Um, so the capacity and, you know, to some extent, the expertise to run large-scale building projects. Uh, is, is just not there. And, you know, some, in the past, we've tried to take it on and make it work and, you know, some things ended up working uh, against the town. So in this proposal um, that I have before the, the board tonight is for a policy that would require. The town to use uh. For, you know, any project that required the coordination of multiple trades. Um, to, you know, both use, well, A, use state procurement law for building projects as defined in, in the policy that. Michelle, do you have, can you be able to go to um, the policy itself? Thank you. So I mean, the, those, those are standard. I mean, those, those are really don't have a choice, but that, those certainly add a level of complexity to public building projects. That require um, you know, both the procurement and advertising for services as well as the management of the projects to ensure that. Um, prevailing wage is paid where appropriate and the town is, you know, burdened with. The oversight of the payroll records to ensure that uh, the payments are being made uh, in line with prevailing wage, prevailing wages. And it becomes difficult the more uh, trades you, you, you add in. So at least in this situation, I'm proposing that we. Move to a model that in, you know, in most cases, and I put a clause here in the, in the um. In uh, in the, in the policy that would, you know, allow me to, to, you know, at, at my discretion or the town administrator's discretion to opt out of, but to use a general. Uh, manager or construction manager. That is proficient in Massachusetts uh, public building projects. To, you know, A, to relieve some liability from the town in that, you know, when we define the scope of our project. They're bidding on the entire project and it's kind of becomes on them to deal with the sub-trades and the delivery of items. Uh, instead of the towns and also uh, as a layer uh, to ensure the town uh, has the expertise in the oversight of these projects to make sure they're done right. Uh, and done legally. And um, so it's, I don't know if the board has any comments. The decision has, it doesn't have to be made tonight, but this is something I wanted to get conversation going on uh, anyways.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, certainly this is not a uh, new issue. Anybody that knows the history of Town Hall twenty years ago. That we need to recognize that the complexities of the construction trade. The uh, particular requirements of the state laws and so forth really push any major project beyond the normal limits of our state, staff capability. So. I think this is a direction that the town needs to go in and just to recognize that uh, you know, town government becomes more complex. And we just got to realize that there are some costs that uh, we'll have to absorb due to that in order to get the right product in the end.
Thank you. I completely agree with that. Um, any other comments from board members?
I think it looks good. Think it makes sense to me and I think it's a good addition to the policies.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, if there are no other board members who wish to speak on this um. And we're ready to vote to approve the policy, um, then perhaps Deirdre, and you could make the motion again. Under L.
Oh, right, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one. Move to approve the town of Wenham building projects policy as presented.
Gary seconds.
Great, thank you. Take a roll call vote, Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. And Ben is yes, that's unanimous. Thank you, seven twenty-four. We'll move on to item M. Update from Michelle McGovern on the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission Advisory regarding local board's ability to allow Mass General law, chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve. Um, on-premises wines and malt beverages license holders to trade their licenses for a section twelve on-premises all alcoholic beverages license. Michelle?
Hi, um, yes, so Governor Healy signed an act which took effect July first and allows on-premises wine and malt liquor license holders to exchange their license for an all-alcohol license. They would still have to fill out an application um and have a hearing. But um they, having said that, the only businesses in Wenham that have an on-premise liquor license is Platte du Jour and they already have an all-alcohol license. So this is just something that the town would they would need to adopt prior to any business in the future who who would fit that criteria.
Excellent. That's a, that's an important update, because who knows, maybe something that we're asked to do down the line. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that update? Don't see any or in the public, thank you. All right, so that leaves item um uh K, which we'll wait for Sharon. Um, I am gonna move on to item N, other matters, as may not have been anticipated and sort of take the liberty of um mentioning something that I would have mentioned during select board comments if I had remembered. And that's just to um to give a uh um s- uh some applause to Joe Passamato. Um, you may have seen in the uh Hamilton Wenham news last week that the Board of Trustees of the First Church of Wenham uh wrote a letter to the editor um discussing the article that had been in in an earlier H W News edition regarding green energy momentum picks up in Hamilton and Wenham, and it featured the solar panel project at the First Church of Wenham. And the board specifically um singled Joe out for praise in those efforts, said specifically um the following were instrumental in bringing the project to fruition. Uh, Joe Passamato, who assisted in the coordination of the required inspection reviews from the town's building inspector, electrical inspector and fire safety officer, and facilitating communication with the Wenham Historic District Commission. So, Joe, uh, well done and thank you for your efforts and I'm glad that um that you got some recognition on on that important work um in our local paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate the kind words. Thank you very much.
Good job, Joe.
Yes.
Thanks, Joe. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Right, so um I know we're expecting Sharon at around seven thirty?
Did Karen Karen get carried off by a bear or something?
Oh, where's Karen?
Sorry, I'm I'm muted. I was I was muted, sorry. Carrie, Karen uh texted me actually just a second ago saying that she had, she her service was really spotty and kept dropping, so she's dropped out.
All right, so she didn't get eaten by a bear. That's good.
No.
Steve with it, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Steve, with a couple men spare here, can you just give us a quick update on the uh twenty-five mile per hour speed limit signs?
Yeah, sure. So we're, they finished all the, all the entering Wenham. I know I think where we left off was we had two two more uh that needed to go up on a couple side roads that entered Wenham. They've, those have been received and put up uh and now uh they have taking down all the thirty-five uh mile per hour signs. The chief is in contact with the state working on um um, oh my God, uh, I'm sorry, then the road escapes me.
Route ninety-seven and twenty-two.
Yeah, we're sorry, Route ninety-seven, thank you, and twenty-two uh to get permission to opt into a local option that would allow the town to drop those routes to the twenty-five miles an hour too. So when we're working on, uh, which we just discussed the with with the police executive assi- assistant, they've had a small um social media posting on the public safety side of things, but we're working in conjunction with them and Guilfoyle to put together a more robust social media outreach now that um, you know, every- everything is in place.
Hey, Steve? So I don't know why you would know this, but um when you're on Grapevine Road going towards Gordon, there's a little section of twenty-two there where the the speed goes up to thirty. And
Yeah.
So and and then it's not clear that once you get off that, that you gotta drop to twenty-five again. As you
Yeah, so the, my understanding is the entire length of twenty-two is not twenty-five miles an hour. It's because it's a state numbered route.
Right, but so so when you, when you go down Grapevine Road
Yeah.
Uh, uh, twenty-two comes in on the right, you go down like, I don't know. Um, probably a thousand yards and the speed limit is thirty. And then twenty-two bangs a left. And now you're back on on, and so theoretically, there should be a sign immediately after that that says twenty-five.
All right, so this is on Grapevine Road specifically?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I'll um
It's between twenty-two and Gordon. It's it, people are gonna think it's thirty when it's it's actually twenty-five.
Okay.
There's there's no sign.
I think the route that you're talking about, Peter, and you may have already said this, um it passes into Beverly, because like Long Hill, which is on the right, is in Beverly.
Yeah, yeah.
So it passes into Beverly and then when you take that left to head back towards Gordon, it would change to Wenham, although not for a while, I think, not until you know, well past, I mean, there's a couple, there's a Beverly School there, so I think it
No, I'm going, I'm going on Grapevine towards Gordon.
Grapevine towards oh, I thought you just talked about taking a right onto Essex Street.
No.
That's because that's twenty-two.
So as you, yeah, um, right about there, Gary, and then and then when you're on that section of twenty-two, which happens to be Grapevine Road, there's a sign that says thirty miles per hour. Then then twenty-two takes a left. And what's so so people continuing on to Gordon are gonna think the speed limit is thirty. Unless somebody puts up a sign after that that says twenty-five, that's all.
Okay, I think I know, I think I know what you're talking about, down by the iron rail.
Passed it.
Yeah, right.
Because I just, I think people are gonna get pulled over.
Yeah, no, you're probably right. I'll I'll take a ride, I'm I'm I'll take a ride in that way tomorrow and then, uh, you know, I'll talk with Rich and we'll definitely we'll get it, we'll we'll straighten it out.
Okay. So who is this person, what we're waiting for?
Uh, Sharon Everett from K P Law is just going to speak on item K, which is this um language in the agreement with National Grid relating to the charging station. Um
I can give a brief background, Mr. Chairman, if you if you'd like. I know Sharon's gonna have the intricate, you know, legal uh details, but
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so um this is just regarding the E V electric um car stations at the Bueker School. Just as a reminder, um, at the special town meeting, there was an article that authorized the select board to grant utility easements on the Bueker property. Um, essentially, the article just gave the select board temporary custody of the school property solely for the purpose of granting the easement that passed the special town meeting. And then I think it was two meetings ago, the select board signed off on the easement, which is required. However, um, K P Lodge, as standard practice, they reviewed the final language and Sharon had made a couple suggestions um for edits on the document. And under her reading, um, basically National Grid was able to move the easement to to a different location if they wanted on the location. Uh, this is probably, you know, not likely to happen. But Sharon had just thought it was also necessary to allow a stipulation, um, allowing the town to also move the easement if they wanted on the property, just to have it sort of both ways. Um, in addition, Sharon had said that a lot of times National Grid and Verizon, um, if the town ends up not using the easement down the road for whatever reason, although probably unlikely, uh, National Grid and Verizon could continue to service their um customers using the easement as well, the the, you know, for coverage. He's, she said, you know, some towns will allow that, some towns will not. She just wanted to point that out. But anyways, uh, she made those edits, um and the other edit was just that it would, you know, only be used for municipal purposes. However, I checked in with the National Grid attorney and they basically said, under the new tariff provisions, um, all easements have to be sort of, uh, they can't be modified essentially, and the town has to agree to the stipulations that are set forth in the original draft. And Sharon did her own research and she sort of concurred with that. Uh, that's my understanding anyways. So long and short of it is, if, you know, the select board signed off on a couple meetings ago, but just know that the, you know, National Grid could, in theory, move the easement to a different location on the Bueker property if they wanted, dislike, uh, the town just can't, you know, unreasonably refuse that. And also, in theory, the easement could be used for non-municipal purposes down the road, although, you know, it could it could not happen. But that's that's the long and short of it.
Okay, thank you. Um, right, and I I understand that the National Grid has said that they are unwilling to to make those couple of changes that Sharon had proposed. And then at least from, wh- where that leaves us is that we would have to accept their language if we want to go forward with the charging station. I'd be, I'd be very interested to hear the, you know, the the National Grid lawyer's explanation of how the tariff um piece comes into play, but um I think the bottom line is they're they're unwilling to to make those those changes that would that would prevent them from um assigning the easement, removing it to a different part of Bueker. Um if we, is there, this seems like there's a fourth attendee who's come in. Oh, no. Okay, um, so I don't want to keep us here um to, you know, to wait for Sharon, especially we don't know exactly when she's gonna come on. And I realize she had another select board meeting for a town she represents, so it could be that that's running, running along. So unless, and Joe or Steve, unless you you know she's gonna be here within the next like three minutes, then I'd recommend that we either um defer action on this, or if everyone is satisfied with the description that Joe has given, which sounds like is, you know, a paraphrasing of what Sharon will tell us, we could go forward and and vote.
Let's vote.
Okay, um, great, and so
Well, Gary, Deirdre? Would, are you guys willing to vote?
Yeah, I think I'm fine with it.
Gary?
Sure, yes, let's go ahead.
All right, great, so I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion that um find the right bear with for a second. Uh, make a motion that we vote to amend the signing of the document granting an easement at the Bueker School for the installation of electric vehicle charging station in the form that is has currently been exchanged between our council and National Grid slash Verizon.
Second.
Great, we'll uh take a vote. Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. And um Steve or Joe, you can just pass on to Sharon our our apologies for not being able to um wait for her, but the Joe gave a um a very able paraphrasing of um the situation, including the legal issues. And so we um felt like we were well informed enough to to move forward without um needing to push this to another meeting.
Fair thing, thank you.
Great, thanks, um. That's it, so um would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can we confirm the dates and our next one's in person, right? We agreed?
Yes, the next today, the next time is six thirty on September ninth, um, where we'll have one or more representatives from the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District there to speak about the vote on September fifteenth and other other exciting agenda items, I'm sure, to uh be determined. Um, and I think we had a have a consensus based on the earlier discussion that the board would be fine withholding that meeting at the Hamilton Wenham Library, assuming that it's available and that uh Steve and staff can work out all of the logistics. And if if not, then I think there was also a general consensus that we would do it remotely again, um if for some reason that that venue doesn't work out. And then uh we have the meeting after that, I have a September twenty-third, and I think we're just then, you know, back to the uh first and third uh Tuesdays, I believe. So it'll be October seventh, October twenty-first and so on. All right, um, great. Um, someone like to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, select board meeting at seven forty P M.
Gary seconds.
Great, we'll take a roll call, Peter?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Michelle. Thanks, Steve.